Good evening, this is the second meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel. This is Monday, November 23rd, meeting in regular session that stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Moe and the invocation by Reverend Litchfield. Reverend Litchfield?
Would you go in, you first?
You, always you.
All right. Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all in authority, granted to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty on behalf of all thy people. We commend this nation, this city, our law enforcement community, our fine rescue, and thy people to thy merciful care and understanding. Remember those who lie upon a bed of affliction; comfort those who mourn. And may our fervent prayer always be that we remain one nation under God. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Ricks?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
The approval of the minutes of the 43rd meeting, November 9th, may I have a motion or question?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lez, have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes.
May I have now the report of the Mayor and City Council, and I'll start with Mr. Smalls.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Crary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Thursday, I had the pleasure of attending the legislative hearings on the Laurel Hospital along with my colleagues and many supporters from the city of Laurel. I thank them for attending, and also our legislative representatives in Mary Lehman and also Jocelyn Penya-Melnik. This past Saturday, Mayor and Valerie Nicholas and I attended the tree lighting at the town center, and there were, for once, it was a rather warm evening, so it was very pleasant. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and there's lots to be thankful for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thursday, November 12th, myself and Mayor and council members had the pleasure of attending the Laurel Board of Trade Dinner Meeting at Friendship Hall. It was a pretty good turnout. Monday, November 16th, I want to thank Mary Lehman and Mike Lotzky for setting up the briefing by Prince George's County staff on the progress on the upper bay at Laurel Lakes. They have, in fact, presented a good landscape plan, clustering trees so not to block the view for people that live on the lake. Wednesday, November 18th, we had a nice meeting here at City Hall, Save Our Stop. And as Ms. Crary mentioned, we had the pleasure to go down to Annapolis for the press conference and the HEO hearing. I learned a few things. I especially want to thank Jocelyn Penya-Melnik. I wouldn't want to be in a courtroom with her. She asked some tough questions, and was watching, like watching Law &amp; Order on television. She did a very, very good job. The presentation of the panel was by the CEO of Mums and Neil, the CEO of Dimensions, along with Prince George's County Representatives. I'll make this observation because I think it's important. John Spearman is the primary operating officer at Laurel Regional Hospital, and he was not on the panel. It's a little distressing to me, because he would be the one that would be most privy to what's going on over there. But it was a very, very good hearing, it went on to just shy of 5:00. And I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. There are a lot of people on the road, so drive carefully, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our friend Silpa Shendi, that's with us tonight. Last Friday, the council partnered with Mary Lehman and distributed turkeys to the senior citizens and some of the needy families in the city. And I'd also like to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, appreciate it. I guess a number of people have noticed that I look like your neighborhood Schnauzer. It's actually in recognition of November Grow Month, which is recognizing men's health and dealing with other major issues. Myself and the members of the Police Department, Chief McLaughlin, I want to thank your members for all the efforts that they make in representing charities from across the country, excuse me, the country and the world, and their efforts to raise money for those particular charities. I can't wait for the 30th when I can shave this thing off and get back to normal, but nevertheless, it's been a pleasure to participate. The other thing that I want to recognize is Mr. William Goddard of our staff, for all the many hours that he's been putting in helping us to try and, himself and many other members of the staff, including the members of the committee that are trying to help save our hospital, but I want to recognize him. Audrey Barnes has been an excellent person that has really helped to bring the efforts forward, and I want to thank her and her staff for all their efforts as well. That's my report. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things, let me thank Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School, they invited me to their career day, I appreciate the invitation, I was glad to be able to take part, and a lot of good questions from a lot of the kids there, and again, I think it was a great time and appreciated the invitation. You did hear that the Board of Trade had their dinner meeting, annual meeting, want to congratulate the new officers, want to thank them for inviting us and allowing us the opportunity to, as well, to participate and give an update on what's happening in the city of Laurel. The tree lighting at the Laurel Center, the Center at Laurel, Town Center at Laurel, want to thank them for the invitation, I think Valerie and Donna, they were looking to throw the switch, but Santa Claus had to do it, so, maybe next year. It's a beautiful tree, and want to thank them for the invitation to be with them, and I think very well attended. It won't be as well attended as the city of Laurel's tree lighting, which is on December the 5th, right, Mike? Our tree lighting, where we light the tree on Main Street, as well as we do the illumination of the community center there at 5th and Montgomery Street. So, the holiday parade will again happen on December the 5th, you meet up here at City Hall at 5:30, they'll take off down to the parade. Inside, there'll be plenty of activities, and we encourage everyone to take part in that. And, as I said, roughly around 6:00, 6:30, we'll do the illumination, and if we always done, the Main Street tree will be lit as well. On December the 11th, the community invited to participate in the lighting of the Hanukkah at O'Shea Shalom Synagogue. On December the 11th, at 6:45 until 7:00, it's a quick service, and I appreciate the invitation, look forward to being with them as well. On December the 12th, the breakfast with Santa Claus at Partnership Hall at 9:00 a.m. until 10:30, 10:30 a.m. You have to, Mike, any seats still available, you have to reserve these seats, and they go pretty quick, so call the Department of Parking Records if you're interested. The Laurel Lakes update, I want to thank the county and Mary Lehman in particular for all their work they did coming out and involving the community, and really had to do a lot with whether they wanted to do a fence around the lake. We've, Mike Lotzky from the city, has been our point person working with the county officials, I know that, I think he's going to be in touch with, if he hadn't already done, and Fred, they want to walk that area, Mike, has that been done yet? Get an update real quick on that.
We did meet with some Prince George County staff today, the fence was still up, so it's very difficult to walk, the temporary fence for the construction, but we'll try and get something accomplished here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. So, for those that may be watching, if you have an interest or you have something you'd like, Mike, to place forward before the county on this, strawberries, trees, and other things, please contact Mike Lotzky. Former Mayor DePietro's in the back, let me now give him his new title, that of Grand Daddy, congratulations. To Bradley DePietro, who's a member of our force, and I forgot my notes, yell out the name of the baby, Bob.
Grayson Bradley.
Grayson Bradley DePietro, for the record. Congratulations to you and the family, and Bradley and his family as well. City Hall will be closed on Thursday, as well as Friday, for the holiday. Don't forget, on November the 26th, is the 5K Turkey Trot, they've moved it this year, it's at McCullough Field between 8:00 and 9:30. Great opportunity, before you go eating all the turkey, to come out and either run the 5K, or they have a fun walk as well, and money goes to a good cause. I did have the opportunity as well, Mr. President, to attend the Prince George County Municipal Association hosted by Forest Heights last week. They did have a discussion, I know there's an individual that's going to speak tonight as well, regarding fracking, which was presented by the Chesapeake Climate Action Network, and I think she is going to be sending me some information, I thought maybe after the first of the year, might be a presentation that council might like to hear. I thought it's had some slides, thought it was a presentation well worth listening to, although we may not see fracking occur here, they are working with the PG-CMA as well. And that concludes my report.
If you want to make your mayoral appointment?
Oh, have you? The, I'm sorry, I do, mayoral appointment of Kenneth, somebody say his last name before?
Scripps.
Got it. For the Laurel City Pension Board.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lez, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes.
Thank you. Point of clarification, Mr. Green's not here, is there another physician available on that board? I got a text yesterday or the day before that indicated there was.
It's time for the employee representatives to be nominated and elected by the employees.
Oh, it's not our agenda? Okay, thank you, I misunderstood that. Okay, we'll move on to the general public hearing. Ms. Nicholas, you have a guest that would like to speak, would you please introduce her?
Mrs. Shilpa Shendi.
Silpa Shendi.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Shilpa Shendi, and I'm concerned about the effects of hydraulic fracturing, or fracking. The current state moratorium expires in 2017. After that, companies will be free to set up gas wells throughout Maryland, including in PG County. PG County sits on the Taylorsville Basin. Taylorsville stretches into Virginia, and companies are already fracking on that portion of the basin. These same companies are scouting sites in PG County and hoping to lease those properties after our moratorium expires. Fracking poisons people and makes water unusable. Strong evidence shows the link between fracking and life-threatening illnesses such as cancer. Residents of fracked land can no longer get clean water from their own pipes. They have to rely on bottled water for drinking, cooking, bathing, and washing their clothes. Because no one wants to buy property on fracked land, housing values will plummet and local businesses will suffer. The PG County Council is considering a ban on fracking. Although Laurel itself does not rest on the Taylorsville Basin, we still might be vulnerable to the pollution from the southern PG County gas wells, since we share the same water sources. Furthermore, as citizens of PG County, we should stand in solidarity with our neighbors in southern PG County, who, our neighbors in southern PG County, who do live directly on top of this basin. The Chesapeake Climate Action Network is gathering signatures from groups throughout PG County to support this ban. I urge Laurel's, I urge the Laurel City Council to stand up for our city and our county by adding their name to this list. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, it's a pleasure having you with us.
Address, address, we need your address.
Oh yeah, we need your address for the record.
Oh, 9119 Brier Chip Street, Laurel, Maryland 20708. And also, I spoke with Ms. Rao, and I will submit my testimony electronically to her.
Okay, thank you very much. I misunderstood you, we are ahead of you.
Mr. President, if I could just make one really, really quick comment?
Sure.
The whole fracking issue was something that was, two years ago, a topic of the committee that I serve on with the National League of Cities, the Environment, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee, and as was pointed out, while it may not be at the forefront of discussion here in Maryland, it is certainly something, particularly in the Midwest, that is very much discussed, both sides, pro and con. So, I certainly, for one, will take a close look at what you presented.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Moe?
And as I said, if you all want us to at least invite her to the work session at the first of the year, let me know, I have a card, and she...
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the council, Mr. Crary? All right, thank you again for coming. We'll move on to item number nine, which is a consideration recommendation toward a purchase of a four-by-five, one-ton dump truck with a snowplow that we dealt with during our work session, again, Mr. Free.
Thanks, sir. Yes, as discussed in the work session, Department of Public Works put together a proposal to buy a four-by-four dump truck. The Apple Ford has been awarded the State of Maryland contract for the purchase of this dump truck, and funding is realized through savings from prior years, which will save us from having to purchase it later using finance money, and looking to award this contract for $61,440 to Apple Ford.
Thank you, sir. Again, we dealt with this during the work session, may I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Crary?
I recommend the purchase as Mr. Free has set forth for the fleet acquisition of one four-by-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Free. Item number 10, bear with me, introduction in first public hearing on resolution number 11-15, a resolution concerning Anderson's Corner Tax Increment Financing District Designation and Creation of a Special Fund, et cetera, a resolution adopted pursuant to Section 12-201 et cec. of the Economic Development Article of the Annotated Code of the State of Maryland, quote, "the act," an anticipation of the issuance by the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, "the city" in quotes, "of the special obligation bonds providing for the designation of contiguous property in the city of Laurel, generally bounded by Van Duzen Road to the northwest, Conti Road to the northeast, and a proposed extension of Conti Road that will lie northwest of the existing Virginia Manor Road, excuse me, Virginia Manor Court to the southeast, and Contair Drive to the southwest." In brackets, "the district," for purposes of the act, creating a special fund pursuant to the act, providing for the deposit and use of money in such special fund, pledging that the city will allocate and divide property taxes on real property within the district so that a certain portion of the real property tax, in brackets, "the tax" in quotes, increment, will be allocated and paid into the special fund, and providing for finding and determining matters in connection therewith. I've read this into the record for the first time. I'll open this, open the public hearing at 7:20, is there anyone here wishing to speak?
President Ricks, Mayor Moe, members of the council, Bob Dory, Miles in Stockbridge, City's Bond Council. This is a request that has come in from the owners of certain adjacent property in the Anderson's Corner area, to request the create, that the city create a tax increment financing district for the purpose of splitting up the real property taxes that will come in on property currently owned by Ribera Anderson's Corner and Avalon Laurel, I believe, to pay for the purchase of 6.67 acres of land from Charles Young and his family, to be used for a park, and also to provide funds for the extension of a certain sewer that will serve their properties and other properties in the area, extension and expansion of the Mr. Manzi, Mayor, Ms. Mills, Ms. Saylor, and I have met with them and have talked to them in several instances. This is the, the resolution is the first part, it creates the district, the next piece of legislation, which you will read, apologies for the length, will be the ordinance which will authorize the sale of the bonds to provide the financing for that. This is, the TIF process is one that the city has been through a couple of times, most recently with the town center at Laurel, and I was just here a couple of months ago when that property was sold, and the owner of the property bought the bonds. In this instance, Ribera Anderson's Corner, or one of their members or affiliates will presumably is intending to buy the bond, so it will be a similar private purchase, if not having a public investment involved. You want me to get into, well, let me do it right now, because the ordinance authorizes the sale of bonds up to $4 million, with a maximum interest rate of 8% for a 30-year term, and provides that only 60% of the tax increment, tax increment being the increase in taxes as a result of the development of the, of the property out there that's in the district, would be available to pay the debt service on the bonds. The city would continue to get the, the existing taxes on the property prior to the development, as well as the other 40% of the tax increment for the term of the bond.
Okay, questions from the council? Mr. Smalls?
None at this time, Mr. President.
Okay. Anyone from Valerie?
No question.
Excuse me. Yes, Michelle? Ms. Saylor?
Mr. President, we just wanted to say for the record that this will have no budgetary impact for the city for the next two years, at least. The city will continue to receive the current taxes, at the very least, while, until the property increases in value.
Then, let me ask you this question while you're there, and looking at, since you, Dory, and you brought it up, so you kind of opened it up for me, the other $200,000 that we're talking about, the million four-two, if it's a max of $4 million, then how do we get to that?
Over the 30-year period, it's paid back, that's what you're asking.
Well, I'm asking, you know, if we're, if we're going to issue the $4,200,000?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a maximum amount, the expected amount is about $3,808,000.
Oh, you said $4 million was the max?
No, I'm sorry, $4,200,000 is the max in here.
Okay.
I had changed it from $4,000 to $4,200 at the last minute, because I'm always afraid that people underestimate things, but the expectation and the numbers that they have run so far is, I think, $3,606,000, which includes the amount to buy the land, portion of the cost of the sewer expansion and enlargement, and interest reserves, so capitalized interest reserve, pay interest during the period until the improvements are done and the taxes start coming in, and the cost of issuing.
Yeah, I understand how all that went, I just...
Yeah, the numbers didn't work.
I was listening to you, and you did that, to what happened.
Yeah, no, I thank you very much for correcting me.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Michael?
Yeah, let me just, you said 8%, that's, that's the assumed maximum interest rate, it could be less than that.
The numbers have been run at 7%.
Right.
Which is what they anticipate, and, and at this point, what the proposed bond purchaser has indicated that he's willing to accept.
Yep.
But, hey, we never know what's going to happen before...
Well, you don't know what the Fed's going to do, and that'll impact the bond rate. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from the council? All right, we'll have this for our, and Ms. Saylor, nothing else from you, right? Okay, thank you. So, we'll have this on our work session, and we'll also have it at our meeting on December the 14th with possible action.
Right, and representatives of Ribera and their council, in addition, Mr. DePietro, will be here for the work session at least, and will be here on the 14th, if you ask.
Okay, you want to stay close?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to item number 11, if you'll bear with me. This is introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1856, an ordinance concerning Anderson's Corner Tax Increment Financing Special Obligation Bonds, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, in brackets, "the city," pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12-201 et cec. of the Economic Development Article and Annotated Code of the State of Maryland, in, in brackets, "the act" in quote, authorizing and empowering the city to issue up to $4,200,000 of special obligation bonds, and determining a maximum interest rate and a maximum maturity date in order to finance or reimburse, one, the cost of a acquisition of cer- cost of, A, acquisition of certain real property in Anderson's Corner Development District for use as a city park, and B, construction of certain public infrastructure improvements relating to Anderson's Corner Development District, and two, other costs permitted under the act, providing that such bonds and the interest thereon shall never constitute a general obligation of the city or a pledge of full faith and credit, providing for further specifications, prescription determination, provision for approval, and various other matters, details, documents, and procedures in connection with the authorization, issuance, security, sale, and payment for any such bonds. Making certain legislative findings expressly providing that this ordinance shall not be subject to being petitioned or to referendum, and generally providing for the issuance of special obligation bonds in accordance with the act. Mr. Dory?
Once again, Bob Dory, Miles in Stockbridge, Bond Council. I think I covered the items that are in this one in my prior testimony. 4.2 million max, 8%, 30 years, with the expectation that you will have a Ribera entity or person buying the bond.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Smalls?
No, I don't have any.
Anyone?
Thank you very much. Again, for the record, this will be on our work session agenda for December the second and our next meeting, which will be December the fourteenth. At this time, I think we've agreed that we will not have a meeting on the 28th of December. Is that correct?
I guess that'd be asked.
We'll get back.
You get back to me?
Let me just check this.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight? If not, we are adjourned at 7:30.